Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started. It's good to see everyone this August 26, 2025 for our Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm pleased this evening that we have Reverend Greg Meadows with Mount Zion United Methodist Church. He will be providing our invocation, and that will be followed by the pledge, which will be brought by firefighter Bradley Lamb of Station 12 Seashift. For those of you willing and able, please stand for both our invocation and pledge.
I'll let me the opportunity to say as a resident of Cobb County for only about two months now, it is an honor and a privilege to be here and have this opportunity to share in this time with you. So I invite you now to bow your head if you would like, or take the posture of prayer, and let's share together. "Gracious, loving, and almighty God, we come now into your presence on this evening. And Lord, we are thankful for the blessings in our life. We are thankful for the opportunity of where we live. And Lord, we ask your blessings now. As all of the things that take place here tonight, that you would bring wisdom and discernment. And Lord, that in the midst of all that goes on, we will be reminded to heed one of your calls, which is to seek mercy, to seek justice, and to walk humbly with you and you alone. Bless all that takes place here tonight, for it's in the lovely name of Jesus we pray this prayer. Amen."
Please direct your attention to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you Reverend Meadows and firefighter Lamb. And thank you all of you for being here this evening. We recognize we have a number of you who have served our country, and we all want to thank you for your service. With that, we'll call our meeting to order. We do have presentations before us, and the first one is to recognize the League of Women Voters of Marietta Cobb. May you please join me up front.
Good evening, ladies. We'll go ahead and we'll center up. Oh, there's many more of you. Go away. Let's have everybody come forward. It's good to see all of you this evening. Thank you for being here, and it's certainly my pleasure to provide this proclamation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Whereas the League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 as a bold and visionary mighty political experiment by the trailblazing women of the suffragist movement and the National American Women's Suffrage Association. Its mission was to help the 20 million newly enfranchised women voters understand and fulfill their civic responsibilities following the ratification of the 19th Amendment. And whereas for more than a century, the League has remained steadfast in its efforts to empower voters and defend democracy through nonpartisan civic engagement, sponsoring key legislation. And whereas the League of Women Voters is widely respected for its nonpartisan approach to providing reliable election information, including hosting candidate forums and publishing resources on state and local ballot initiatives while working tirelessly to register, educate, and mobilize voters. Whereas Monica E. Granderson, President of the Women of, excuse me, League of Women Voters of Marietta Cobb County Incorporated, exemplifies the League's enduring belief that it informed and engaged citizenry, regardless of gender, race, or political affiliation, is the cornerstone of a thriving democracy. Now therefore, we the Cobb County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim August 26, 2025, as League of Women Voters of Marietta Cobb County Incorporated Day in Cobb County. Say that five times for us. We recognize and commend the League for 70 years of dedicated service in our community and for its unwavering commitment to empowering voters and strengthening the democratic process. This, the 26th day of August 2025. Congratulations. You know what? As president, I'm actually going to pass that to one of our oldest members of our league, Ms. Elizabeth Melville, who's also one of our past presidents.
Thank you so much for honoring us today. I was honored to be the League President for almost 19 years, and I really, truly appreciate the fact that the county is honoring us today. Thank you.
One more thing. It should not be neglected to say that today is the anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment in the United States of America, which gave all states' females, women, the right to vote. Today is the day.
How fitting. Today is the day. So we'll line up here for a photo. I'll come beside you. You may want to balance this out over here. Yeah, so we look even across. Yes. And I'll come next to you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Good seeing you. Thank you for coming.
All right. Those of you who are here to celebrate September 17th as Constitution Day, I'll ask that you please join Commissioner Burrow up front.
Good evening, everyone. Every year I have the honor of presenting the Barbara Hickey Children's Fund a proclamation for Constitution Day. These ladies raise money and buy 3,000 or more Constitution booklets for all the 4th graders at Cobb County School System and Marietta City School System to recognize September 17th as Constitution Day. So I think it's very fitting, too, that we have an audience of veterans who, without the Constitution, without a service to our country, we wouldn't have our freedoms and rights as our right to vote. So whereas the United States Constitution stands as a powerful symbol of the tenacity and determination shown by Americans throughout history to safeguard our liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights, on September 17, 2025, we mark the 238th anniversary of the signing of this foundational document by 39 courageous delegates at the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia. And whereas the framers of the Constitution established a strong federal government designed to ensure national stability and strength, while carefully limiting its powers and reserving all unassigned authority to the states and the people. It remains essential that all Americans read, study, and understand this unparalleled document of liberty and commit to protecting the freedoms enshrined in the Bill of Rights. And whereas Constitution Day was introduced in Cobb County in 2010 through the efforts of Millie Rogers, then immediate past president of the Georgia Federation of Republican Women and past president of the Cobb County Republican Women's Club. She was joined by Barbara Hickey and members of the Constitution Day Committee of the Cobb County Republican Women's Club, who distributed copies of the Constitution to elementary students across Cobb County and Marietta City Schools. And whereas in 2018, Barbara Hickey established the Constitution Day Fund as part of the Barbara Hickey's Children's Fund to help raise money for the continued distribution of constitutions to local elementary school students. The ongoing dedication of supporters serves as a valuable contribution to educating our youth and honoring those who champion this cause before them. Now therefore, we the Cobb County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim September 17, 2025, as Constitution Day in Cobb County. We extend our gratitude to Barbara Hickey Constitution Day Fund and all who support the Constitution booklet project and its mission to educate the public. We encourage all residents to read and reflect on this historic document and join in commemorating its 238th anniversary. This the 26th day of August 2025. So a few of the committee members could not be here tonight, but we have Roseanne Hall and Rose Wing with us to say a few words.
Well, I can't add too much more because she already did a great job of it, so that blew out everything I was gonna say. Anyway, Barbara Hickey passed away about five years ago, and the Constitution Day lives on, and we always adhere to making sure that the children in Cobb and in the city of Marietta get these constitutions. So I would like to pass this over to Rose Wing.
Thank you, Roseanne. I remember the time when I was asked to be on the board of the Barbara Hickey Foundation, the fund for the U.S. Constitution, and it was such an honor, as I'm sure it was to you too, Roseanne, and Joanne, and your involvement with it. Because she formed the foundation to sponsor those objectives that she adored, and that was her country, the flag, our community, the veterans, and our children. Her husband was a veteran, and she taught her children and her grandchildren the importance of the United States Constitution and how invaluable those rights are. And she wanted other children to also learn about that. That's why she formed the foundation, so it assures that our youth, before they go into the middle schools, they get a copy of the Constitution. She also taught her children that it was important that they knew that their father and grandfather was someone that fought to keep those safe and protected for us, those invaluable, and were willing to risk their life to do so. So I promise you, I know Roseanne promised you, and Joanne, and Marsha Stemmy, who's on the committee, that we will always make sure, as long as the foundation is here and we're able to do so, make sure the children have a copy of the constitutions in their hands. Thank you for your acknowledgement.
That concludes the presentation portion of this meeting, and we are now at our first public comment.
Thank you, Chairwoman. As the Board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate for us to review some of those related meeting rules. When you come forward, please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be made to the commissioner's body and addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. Comments should not be slanderous. The Board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating each other with civility. Statements made during the public comment portion do not necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb County Government. And there is a timer on the podium for you to keep track of your three minutes. With that being said, the first speaker is Melissa Crudwick.
Thank you, and just want to share for all of our speakers-
Thank you, and just want to share for all of our speakers to please state your name and to note that there is a timer on the podium that will let you know how much time you have left.
Wonderful. My name is Melissa Crudwig. I've been a Cobb County citizen for 24 years. I'm a disabled veteran. My husband is a proud Army veteran, and my son is soon to join the service. And I think it's wonderful, almost ironic, that we've been talking about the Constitution already at this meeting. I think it's fantastic that we're talking about our rights, our rights to vote yes and no, as you proceed this evening. And I would like to say that it's a beautiful evening that God has granted us, that we live in the land of the free because of the veterans in this room, and unfortunately for those that have lost their lives. I don't usually talk about my story. I'm 100% disabled veteran, but I'm going to talk about it tonight. Usually in our minds' eye, when we think of a disabled veteran, we think of our friends, our family members that are missing a limb or two, or maybe those, like my friends, that suffered through PTSD. I served in the Middle East twice. I was a captain when I left the Army, and I was a Patriot officer. What we did is we shot down Scud missiles, if you remember that, during the first Gulf War. As a result of my service to the country, I was exposed to burned barrels. As an officer in the United States Army, I burnt secret materials while deployed and not deployed. As a result of those burned barrels, I had cancer at 47 years old. I have one kidney. Three years later, as a result of those burned barrels, I got breast cancer, stage two. I had a double mastectomy, and I have 14 inches of scars across my body. I mention this to you because, Eric, I'm just curious. Do you have both of your kidneys, sir? Kelly, do you have your original breasts, ma'am? Our memorial will not only serve as a place to take care of and pay respects to our veterans, but it will also serve as a place to educate our children, our future generations, which is critical. It has been mentioned that the memorial and the foundation that we work hard on have not served veterans. Well, that would be incorrect. We have fielded calls where we have built ramps, wheelchair ramps. We have helped veterans get a hold of their DD-214. Our President Donna Roke can talk about more that we have done there. When you take your oath as a military officer, you raise your hand, integrity is our cornerstone. We serve the country for your freedoms to vote tonight. I hope that you'll vote correctly. Like veterans that honor their commitments, I ask the commissioners this evening, will you honor the original commissioners that approved this important foundation, this for the Cobb Memorial to be built? Will you honor their word and their commitment, as the veterans in this room has honored their commitment to your freedoms and to the United States? I hope you do. There is 170--
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Ma'am, 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 this is, ma'am, this is--
Your time--
We need you to honor the process, ma'am. Can we just turn off her mic so she's not heard on--
She's not--
Take care of the voters and the boughs of meaning.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Your time's up.
Ma'am, this is not-- excuse me. We need for this not to happen. We need to--
Thank you, Mr. Burl, for doing a great job. Thank you, Confederates.
Excuse me. Bill, Bill, hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm going to ask for somebody from our police force to please be here, because we should not have this kind of disrespect of this process move forward. There is a timepiece that clearly states how much time there is. We give honor to everyone who has served, but we ask for you to honor those who are serving on your board by respecting that everyone has the same amount of time to speak. I would also like to share that comments are to be directed before the board, and while you have your First Amendment rights, it is very hard to hear commissioners being called outside of their title in this room. You can call them that, and again, it's within your First Amendment rights, but as we are honoring those to whom honor is due, I just ask that courtesy be provided to our Board of Commissioners. And again, for all comments, as was stated by our county attorney, for comments to be directed to the chair. Bill, please.
The next speaker is Skip Bell.
My name is Skip Bell, and I am a two-tour combat veteran of Vietnam and also a Desert Shield veteran. I am the chairman of the Board of Directors for the Atlanta Vietnam Veterans Business Association, the past president of the Vietnam Helicopter Pilots Association, Georgia Chapter, and the director on the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation. I am also a Purple Heart recipient. I'm telling you all this because I truly believe that service to our nation is much more than a business decision. Some of you believe this vote is simply a business decision, and as county commissioners, you should certainly consider that as one of the factors in deciding how to spend the tax dollars of your constituents. However, in this case, I believe this should be more than a simple business decision, just as the decision to serve made by the veterans it will honor was more than a business decision. The purpose of the Cobb Veterans Memorial Park is to honor the service of over 60,000 Cobb County veterans, some of whom are here tonight. The decision to serve our nation that was made by these veterans was not made as a business decision. Most of them could have had, made a lot more money and lived a lot more, a lot safer and more comfortable life in civilian endeavors. In the case of the Vietnam veterans like me, the decision was made either because we were drafted or because we believed that service to our nation was an obligation of citizenship, and we volunteered to serve even though we knew it might involve going to war. I have heard most of you state at one time or another that you honor the service of our veterans. This is your chance to prove it. It is easy to say that you love and respect and support veterans. Everybody does that these days. It was very different at one time. I wear, whenever I wear my Vietnam Veterans cap to the grocery store, I get thanked for my service, and I'm grateful for that. You folks are in a position to prove your respect and support by voting to donate the necessary funds to begin construction on a memorial that your previous commissioners asked the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation to help build. I hope that you will favorably consider Commissioner Burl's generous offer to transfer $1 million from her sploshed rap share to the Veterans Memorial Foundation. Thank you for giving me the time to speak tonight.
The next speaker is Bob Feister.
Can I negotiate? I'm a real estate broker. Can I negotiate for five minutes? Oh, so bad. Okay, I'll have to cut my speech short.
At least you asked. Thank you.
I'm Major General, retired, Bob Feister. I'm also Lieutenant Colonel Bob Feister, Civil Air Patrol, which is a service to the community, and in God's army, I'm Corporal Feister, God's army. Thank you. Last time I was in this room, the commissioners were looking at the Lister Maddox Lake, and Andy Stanley was going to develop his church there, which is presently being built. The developers wanted to do 200 and some, 240, 250 townhouses, which would have just swamped East Cobb, traffic wise, et cetera. Thanks to you all, it's down around 100. It's manageable. You made some good decisions, and I thank you for it. In fact, I want to thank you and praise you and commend you for the job you're doing. It's not an easy job to do service. Ask the vets and yell. It's not an easy job. I'd like to thank you all. I'd like to thank some of the past people on your board, Tim Lee, Mike Boyce, Bob Oat, who I've worked with or talked to most of them. I'd like to thank Biden and Trump as presidents, because there are different approaches, but that's part of politics, different approaches. So let me cut to the quick. In Marietta, Georgia, one of the biggest property owners is Dobbin's Air Reserve Base. Lockheed's there, the Air Force, the Army, the Navy are there. That is a big part of this county. It's a big part of the population, works there, et cetera, et cetera. So this county is very much tied to the military. And so, since I'm down to one minute, I'm going to have to skip a lot of things I had here to say, and I'll make one point. Early on in my military career, I learned if you take care of the troops, the troops take care of you. If you screw the troops, guess what happens? Vice versa. So I learned to take care of the troops. I think you need to take care of the troops. I recommend you. That's my advocacy, and I've only got 35 seconds left, so I hope that gives you some perspective and some advocacy that you're going to hear more of. Thank you for your time, and I've got 23 seconds. I hand it over to the next person. Is that possible here? I didn't think so. Good night. I'm going to use up a little of your time getting properly dressed, but I did get your attention, didn't I? You're welcome. Thank you.
Painter Dixon Lester.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for all of the work that you're doing for Cobb County. I'm a three-tour Vietnam veteran.
Please, sir, if you put, please state your name.
Say again?
Please state--
Painter Dixon Lester, and I live in West Cobb. I'm the president of the Georgia Vietnam Veterans, and we have many of our members here tonight. But I want to also remind you that all these veterans put their lives on hold, and they went overseas to many different countries from World War I, Revolutionary War, no matter what. We all put our lives on hold. 10 days after I got married, they shipped me to Vietnam. My wife and I, who's with me here tonight, we only saw each other four times in three years, and she stayed with me for 54 years. That's a real tribute. And when I came home, I expected to be respected, but I got off the airplane in San Francisco, San Francisco International Airport, walked through the building, and they told us to take our uniforms off, and we said no. 25 of us had to fight our way to the buses. We were spit on, kicked, and beaten, and we finally made it to the bus, and they followed us all the way down the road. This was done strategically by the United States Communist Party. We know that they were protesters that were assigned and sought after to come help us, help them destroy us and destroy our families. Well, it did destroy me for 10 years. If it wasn't for God and my wife, I probably wouldn't be standing here today. So I want to thank the board for taking the time to listen to us, that we need this memorial. It's not about the living. It's not about you. It's not about me. It's about those heroes from all the wars, especially Vietnam, who were so disrespected when we came home. It's about memorializing them and honoring them and their families, and all the ones that suffered because they were killed in action. We need this memorial so that children can come and see and be proud of their grandparents and their great-grandparents and all those family members, husbands, wives, whatever, whoever lost their lives. We need this memorial for them to be memorialized and honored, and also to educate, like someone else eloquently said, that we need these children to be educated about patriotism and what this country is about. And it's about getting together and thanking those who served us, even those who are passed away now. And I ask that you would please reconsider all the, all the funds that you have available for 10 years. I cannot understand, I'm not a financial guy, I can't understand in 10 years why we couldn't have already had this done. If it had been done with the original funds in the original timeframe, the cost would not have increased as much as they have. So I ask you to please reconsider and try to find the funds to go forward with this. Governor Kemp gave over $500,000. You gave over $500,000. Burl has given over $100,000, $1,500,000. We've got several people that have done great things for us, but we need to get this thing off the ground, and you will see that others will come. The Braves have given us a lot of money, and they've promised us, as soon as it gets off the ground, that they will refund us more money. So I'm asking you to please take this into consideration and let us have this memorial to memorialize and honor our veterans. Thank you.
Howard McVannan.
My name is Major General Howard McManahan. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm speaking about the Veterans Memorial, as you know. I served in the Air Force for 36 years. The last nine years were in Washington, D.C., at Bowling Air Force Base in the Pentagon. The reason I mention this is while I was in Washington, I noticed how many visitors came to that area and visited the memorials and monuments, particularly the World War II Memorial, the Air Force Memorial, and the Vietnam Memorial. These people are being, the people that these memorials serve is the patriots who served in the military, and this could be the same in Cobb County if we were able to build this park. I'm on a little different perspective because I'm a physician, so I saw a lot of injured airmen, some injured Marines, soldiers, and naval officers during my tours, and I saw a lot of injuries, some of which left permanent disabilities, and some gave their all in the sacrificing their lives for this country. As a result, I'm here asking you to vote favorably for this memorial to be built. This is something that would be a tribute to the veterans now as a legacy for them and their families, not only now, but in the generations to come, as a tribute to those people who served to defend good over evil, to offer hope over despair, and to offer freedom over tyranny. Thank you for your attention.
Timer?
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Mark Maloney. I'm the chairman of Cobb. Thanks you for your service. A 501(c)(3) dedicated to helping veterans and their families in Cobb County. The name of our website is cobsalutes.org. We're very Cobb-centric. I'm also a Vietnam veteran, and my father served in World War II in the Pacific, and my grandfather in France in World War I. This November, on Marietta Square, my volunteers will read aloud the names of every veteran buried in Marietta National Cemetery on November 8th and 9th. Almost 20,000 men and women who once wore the uniform. Our events, say their names 2025, will raise money for the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation, just as we supported them last year. Many of the names that we will read have not been spoken aloud for over a century, but each represents service to our country. And this is what this memorial is about: service. I believe every citizen has a duty to serve their country in some way, just as you commissioners serve your country with public service. In my book, there is no higher calling. At Cobb, thanks you for your service. We see every day how deeply service shapes a life. We started a program at Wells, where they visit veterans that are in hospice. They all have a story about their service, and it is what is most important to them at the end of their days on their last campaign. We should never forget the impact their service had on their life after they served. That is the real reward that our country gets, and it is long-term. I know this memorial costs more than others in the state of Georgia, but I know where we lead: Cobb leads in education, aerospace, and healthcare. So there are always other needs, but when I walk into a great cathedral, a grand museum, or the Lincoln Memorial in Washington, I am always grateful that someone had the vision and the courage to persevere. This memorial will stand as Cobb County's testimony to service and sacrifice. I ask you to help us finish it, not only for those who served-- I ask you to help us finish it, not only for those who served, but most importantly, to inspire generations to come. Thank you for your time.
Hal Burke.
My wife and I moved to Georgia four years ago from Chicago. We love our new home, we love our neighbors, and I'm proud to belong to several military organizations, and I'm honored to speak to the commissioners this evening about the Cobb County Memorial Park. I had the honor of serving on the United States USS The Sullivan's destroyer, DD 537, which was named after, in honor of, the five Sullivan brothers from Waterloo, Iowa, that were killed during the Battle of Guadalcanal with 678 shipmates on the USS Juno. I've been to their memorial several times in Waterloo, Iowa. It was a very humbling experience. I've been to Normandy, I've been to Anzio, and I've been to several other memorials. And all of them leave me with the same feeling. They are like a sanctuary, a beacon, calling people to that holy ground to cleanse their wounds, to say their goodbyes, and to say their thank yous for those that supported them. Poor is the nation that has no heroes, but poor still is the nation that having such heroes fails to honor and remember them. So declared Marcus Cicero, a Roman Republican 2,000 years ago. How stands our nation and Cobb County in this regard? The Patriots, POWs, MIA's of the past will be remembered not by the powerful and privileged, but by you who gather to vote on the Cobb County Veterans Memorial. The Sullivan's motto was "We stick together." This memorial will be built, one way or another. We ask for your support. I ask that you please, when you come to your decision to vote, remember the veterans and their families. I praise you, and I thank you for giving me this time to speak, and God bless you.
The next speaker is T. Day Jorgensen.
Am I on the clock already?
No, sir.
Okay. Just checking. Cobb County Commissioners and fellow veterans, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. I'm a former military brat.
Okay, please state your name for us, sir.
Beg your pardon. T. D. Jorgensen, Terrence Dale Jorgensen, Sr. I'm a former military brat, and I graduated high school from Nuremberg American High School in Germany. I even married a military brat, and we've been together for 56 years. My father was a US Marine, George Jorgensen, in World War II. And he's a survivor, was a survivor, of the Battle of Pellulou Island, the second bloodiest battle of World War II in the Marine Corps' history. And his reward was to get sent to Okinawa to finish off the Japanese. So not much of a reward. Personally, I serve 420 veterans in our Veterans for Lunch Bunch group, a very bunch of great patriots. Two of them you saw tonight that were wearing four stars on their lapels of their uniforms. Great Americans all. These guys are all 100% gung-ho patriots, and they would love to see this memorial built. And frankly, it's going to get done whether you appropriate money for them or you don't. Because there are Americans in this country who are going to support this memorial to get built with or without you. But it would sure do us a whole bunch of good if we could get you to do this for them and for the parents and family members of all these veterans that are here or that you don't see that are amongst those 60,000 in Cobb County who also vote. I was going to say a whole bunch of things about individuals, but I'm going to rise to the occasion and skip that and just say thank you for the opportunity to address this very important issue, and I thank Donna Rowe and all of her staff members that do such great work to try to do this for us veterans. God bless us all, we need this.
The next speaker is Dennis Sewell.
My name is Dennis Sewell, and I'm an Army vet. I served 30 years both active duty and reserve. My last assignment was Afghanistan before I retired. I'm here this evening to ask for your support for the memorial park for the veterans. This memorial will stand as a testament to the soldiers that served, those currently serving, and those with answers to call the duty in the future. It will also represent the sacrifices of those who gave all. This memorial is not only for the military personnel that served, but also for the families and the communities that supported them. Please do not delay this any further, because the longer this drags on, the more costly it becomes for all of us. Our veterans deserve your support to make this happen. Thank you for your time.
Donna Rowe.
My name is Donna Rowe. I am the president and CEO of the Cobb Veterans Memorial Foundation, and I was captain in the Army Nurse Corps in Vietnam. I came here tonight not to tell you what to do. I came here to tell you how we got here. In 2015, a lot of you were not here. I do know that Chairman Cupid and Commissioner Burl were here. So I'm going to tell you. We were asked by the commission to form a foundation to build a 501(c)(3) in order to take donations, that the county was going to build it. And we said, fine. Again, we stepped forward out of uniform, but still serving. So then again, in 2015, we were asked to advise on the design, which we were glad to do. The county did the bid for the design, not us. You bid it, we sat, and we helped the staff pick the best memorial that was brought forward. Then, in 2000, and that foundation, that design, by the way, was paid for by the foundation. $300,000 was paid for by the foundation. We paid for that. So then in 2022, we were put in the SPOLS bucket. Now, in May of 2023, the foundation was told that there would be additional money in the SPOLS, revenue above projection, the RAP money. And we were told that it would be dedicated, some of that would be dedicated, a portion of it, to the memorial. So we sat back and said, fine. We continued to take donors' money because people wanted to support us. Then, two weeks ago, we were asked to reduce the design by a new commissioner, which we said, okay, fine, we'll reduce the design. So we got together with the architect, we got together with some of our construction advisors, and we said, okay, we can reduce it from the now 7.5 million, which it was, only 3 million at the beginning, but that's, time's passed, so has COVID, and so has inflation, and we're now at approximately 7.5. So we reduced it to 4.9. Together, we all have 4.1 million. What we're asking tonight is we've been told we can't start because it's a SPOLS project without the money in the bucket. We're asking you to give us $1 million so we can do the now requested reduced sign. I have been told that people are saying that we could do it in phases. Well, according to the SPOLS attorney, we cannot do it in phases. And I'm sure Chairman Cupid is checking into that because we've discussed that with her. I do want to take this opportunity to thank both Commissioner Burl and Chairwoman Cupid for your undying devotion to us veterans.
Ms. Rowe. Your time's up.
We are now on to our consent agenda, and the matters on our consent agenda have been scrolling on the screen prior to the meeting and will do so upon its conclusion. For our clerk, I'm not observing any change to the consent agenda, so I will confer with the commissioners to see if there are any changes that you may have observed that we have not.
I have, I have 24 seconds on the table. May I head it back, please?
I will defer to my county attorney.
No, you can't hold back your time, sir. Only when you were speaking.
Yes, I'm sorry. Public comment has been closed. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm not hearing that there are any changes to consent. And so with that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the items on our consent agenda and authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. That now takes us to the regular portion of this meeting, and our first matter is to address the American Rescue Plan Consulting Services.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, and Madam County Manager. We have one item under the ARPA tab for you tonight, and it is to ask the board to approve change order with Deloitte Consulting LLP for the final time for the administration of our 2021 ARPA funds. Deloitte was chosen after a nationwide search of consultants several years ago. We have gotten through the development of the program, the allocation of the funds. We are now reimbursing our non-profits based on completeness and compliance. So this will actually take us through one more year through next September, and then the final five months will be them tying a bow around all the files, making sure that we are prepared should we ever be audited by the Treasury Department. Therefore, our recommendation is that the Board of Commissioners approve a change order with Deloitte Consulting LLP in an amount not to exceed $2,999,992 for 2021 American Rescue Plan Act Consulting Services. Approve the creation of an audit contingency unit within the ARPA fund in the amount of $750,000. Approve the transfer of available interest earnings within the ARPA fund to the Public Facilities Project Fund. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. I'll move that we approve this agenda item as it has been presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Just, oh. Okay, go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask Jimmy to confirm that these funds are taken from the ARPA.
Yes, ma'am. There are no general fund dollars being expended at all.
Commissioner Burl.
And this will take us through the end of the distribution of funds through 2026. I typically don't vote for consulting agreements, as most of you know, but this is federal money that we can't be amiss with, and there's a lot of requirements and restrictions, and we have to do it right. Therefore, we have an outside firm conducting this for us, so I support it.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? All right, we'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Jimmy. We are now at the county managers tab, which is with respect to the 2022 SPOLS.
You get me again, Madam Chairwoman. The item under the county managers tab is to ask the Board of Commissioners to increase 2022 SPOLS allocations. When the issue was put out to the voters in 2020, it was anticipated the revenue from the 2022 SPOLS would be 750 million. Typically, Cobb County is a conservative-based budgeting governmental entity. People have bought a lot more, especially during COVID. A lot of folks would sit at their house and blow Amazon up, and the sales tax was pouring in when we were thinking that it would be just the adverse. So we have done very well with the SPOLS program. We're anticipating over the life of the 22 SPOLS, we will be over by about $200, a little over $200 million. So this first, the first try is to do 175 million. And we met with department heads who had projects in the SPOLS. We met with the Board of Commissioners to look at the different projects in their districts, and we have for you tonight a list of recommendations. So we ask the Board of Commissioners to authorize the increase to the 2022 SPOLS budgets for approved county projects and city distributions based on current SPOLS revenue collections and anticipated future collections exceeding the originally adopted budget amounts. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you, Jimmy. I move that we approve this agenda item as it has been presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Now, I see Commissioner Garmbrill, and I will just go down the dais since I perceive there may be discussion from all Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Jimmy, I know you said it in your presentation, but I know we had a couple emails on this thinking these were new projects. These are current existing projects within the SPOLS that are being allocated funding.
The only projects that were eligible for RAP funding, which is revenue above projections, are projects that were included in the original SPOLS program.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen, do you have any remarks? Commissioner Burl.
Well, just a quick question. When was the original program? Can you attach a date to that? You mentioned that it's just eligible for the original programs. I'm asking.
The actual program that was voted on by the public in 2022.
I just wanted him to repeat that. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Commissioner Burl.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for being here. I would like to ask all the veterans to please stand or raise your hand so that we can recognize you.[1786.46][1786.46]
So thank you for your service to our great nation. I appreciate your support of the Cobb Veterans Memorial Park and those that are here that are not veterans but are in support of this long overdue project. In the November 2020 presidential election, the 2022 Splot's list was on the ballot and approved by the voters of Cobb County. The Cobb Veterans Memorial Park was on the list for $1 million, along with two other parks that were and still are in District III in the community impact projects that each commissioner had identified. Shaw Park was on my list for 4 million, original list for 4 million, and Ebenezer Downs Park was on the list for 3 million. On the list for revenue above projections, as Jimmy mentioned, Shaw Park is receiving an additional 2.5 million, and Ebenezer Downs Park is receiving an additional 2 million. So let's compare apples to apples. All the projects on the list before us are considered RAP, revenue above projections. They did have to be on the original 22 Splot's list, and they're all over budget because of inflation. Materials, labor costs continue to rise. So District 1 has a park, Price Park, on the list, originally on the list, 2022 Splot's, for $1 million, same as the Veterans Memorial. It is receiving $3 million in RAP funding. Fur Park in District 4 is on the original Splot's list for 100,000, 100,000, and it's receiving 3.4 million. Bartlett Park, also in District 4, is on the original list for 100,000, and it is receiving 1.8 million. Now, I'm happy for everybody that's getting, there's a lot of projects on this list from DOT, other departments, that aren't getting anything, just as the memorial isn't getting anything extra over and above what was on the original list. Because there's a certain amount that has to go through everything, and they're more asked than there are funding for. But I don't understand why, I don't understand why this Veterans Memorial that's been 10 years in the making and the costs continue to rise. If we don't do it now, who knows what's going to happen? So all I'm asking for, originally, I was, we were asking for 4 million to complete the whole $7 million, complete the full funding. We were asked of, the Veterans Memorial Foundation Group were asked to cut it down, that that was too expensive or too much, and they did. And now we're only asking for 1 million to complete a $5 million cost design. So when that wasn't agreeable, I asked, well, can I shift from one park in my district to the Veterans Memorial? And that's what I'm trying to do now. It's not really taken away from, because this is money over and above what was on the original list. So it's not like we promised a $3 million park and we're only giving them two. But anyhow, you may not see that analogy. We've all received numerous emails in support of this project from veterans and citizens alike. I've received over 40 in support and today about five in opposition. Comments from the commissioners and the public have said that it costs too much and the money could be better used for services for our veterans. However, if it's a designated project on the Splot's list, which was approved by the voters, which it is, you can't spend it on anything else. Also, how can you put a price tag on what is too extravagant or too much for our veterans who've put their lives on the line to protect our freedoms? I'm, I'm, I'm all for housing and benefits for veterans. However, the project list must be what is designated and what was approved. There's also been talk about other memorials that were funded and built in the cities within Cobb for a lot less, specifically the one in Smyrna. And I have a slide that Brad's going to put up. This memorial in Smyrna is beautiful memorial. It has the flags of all the service branches, American flag, a wall of honor. It's beautiful. It was built in 2002, 23 years ago, for 2.5 to 3 million dollars. Well, $3 million in 2002 would be, who knows, 20 million now, 10 million, 15 million. I don't know, but I can tell you, you couldn't build this for 3 million, which is what we have currently in the Splot's. We couldn't even do that. So I'm just comparing here. So the Veterans Memorial has been approved by the Board of Commissioners, and if this doesn't get approved and the funding isn't there, we'll have to start all over and the cost will only increase. It's been 10 years in the making. It's time to finish the drill and build the memorial. This was always, please don't clap. This was always slated as a county park. It's on designated Cobb property. It's now a Splot's project, and it needs to be funded by the county. This project has been in the works for over 10 years, and it's now time to act. And it's adjacent to the Cobb Civic Center, the Jenny T. Anderson Theater, and across the street from the new Cobb Police Headquarters. Even if it's not on RAP and not agreeable to the district commissioner and the commissioners on this board, I will continue to fight for our veterans and help raise the funds to construct a lasting memorial to respectfully honor and recognize our veterans and their services to our country. This memorial will be an everlasting tribute to those that served and made sacrifices to our great country to protect our freedoms. And Madam Chair, having said all this, I make a substitute motion to amend the RAP list before us to shift $1 million from Ebenezer Downs Park to the Veterans Memorial.
I will second, and that's for purpose of discussion. Is there any discussion of the board for that substitute motion that's before us?
So let me start first by saying to all the service members here, thank you for your service. It's, to me, it's unfortunate that we're in the space that we're in. And anyone who knows me and has followed, me and my service knows that I support our veterans and their families and have family members of my own who have worn a uniform and served in war. So I want to clear, be clear on first, the memorandum of understanding. And it's posted on the Cobb County website for anyone to go and read. But it's clear, as I read that document, that the county fully supported the Veterans Memorial, but there were also commitments for the foundation to be formed and to raise the bulk of the money for this memorial.
That's not true. That's not true.
It's on the website, so I encourage anyone to go and read it. Well, it's in black and white. It also says that there was a commitment that the foundation would raise $25,000 a month and that that's where the majority of the funds would come from. It was not intended to be a taxpayer-funded project. So this is where I start to get into the why. And it's, I fully commit and am committed to making sure the memorial is built, just like everyone said, it will be built. And I am fully committed to making sure it is built. And I would encourage that we be flexible so that we can start the process as soon as possible. I met with the president of the foundation and some of the members last week in my office. My point of having the meeting was to get to a yes, to get to some type of compromise on how we could move forward on building the memorial. In that meeting, I made the ask of the individual cost elements of the memorial park. The committee informed me that the tower itself would cost approximately 2.2 million dollars. To this, I responded that in a 6 million, a 7 million dollar project, if my math is correct, there's 3 million that has been committed from the county, 500,000 that's been committed from the state, and the foundation has raised approximately 1.3 to 1.5 million dollars. This means that every single thing in the park could be built, except for the tower, which could just be delayed to a Phase 2. And I.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. I know we were permissive in allowing the applause, but it is not permissible to be engaging in communication with the commissioner while they're up here deliberating an agenda item. I'd ask that you please refrain from doing that.
And I apologize that a lot of the facts haven't come out in the right way, but this is my attempt to clarify. With a 2.2 million dollar tower, every other element of the park could be built, and I even offered to personally help fundraise the additional 2.2 to 2.5 to build the tower. The, I was told this was completely unacceptable and that by not supporting the additional million dollars of taxpayers' money, I was said, told something that was extremely hurtful and that that is, this is the equivalent of spitting on veterans coming back from Vietnam. I found that, I find that to be insulting, to be insensitive and ridiculous. However, as I sit here today, I offer the exact same compromise. There are funds available today to break ground and build everything in the park except for the tower. And then I will personally help fundraise the $2 million plus needed, understanding that the tower is not a scripted element in this park. It's not a marker. It's not, it's not there with inscriptions or engravements. It is simply a monument that is important. But the rest of the park that honors and educates about our veterans and their service and their sacrifice can be built today. The monument, as I was told, is only a key element because it is taller than the big chicken and can be seen from I-75. I am committed to getting that tower built, but we can break ground today with the funds that have been committed, with the funds that have been raised to build the memorial. And I would like to have that compromise so that we can do what we have said we would do, which is build a memorial in Cobb County fitting of the sacrifice and the service of not only the 60,000 veterans that are in Cobb County now, but those that have passed and their families and the future. This is why I do not support the additional million dollars of taxpayer-funded money into a project that the taxpayers did not commit in the original MOU to build. So hopefully, after this, we can continue to have a dialogue to make sure that we do this memorial as fast as possible in the spirit of Cobb County to honor our veterans.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Burl.
Nancy's not here, correct? Okay. There is an MOU with what Commissioner Allen stated on the monthly payments. However, that was done prior to the Splot's, 22 Splot's. And when I put this on the Splot's list and my community impact project list, there are different restrictions and it changed the whole thing. So we are still operating under that MOU, but the funding for the park really has to be Splot's and counting now. So they are committed to continue to raise, and I'm going to help too. Because I understand, we're not getting the million dollars. I just don't understand why of these other parks that were less than or equal to the same thing this was on the original list are not, this isn't a priority, and they are. I'm sorry, I don't understand why. It's a simple math. So I guess with the, if there's no more discussion, you can call the question on the substitute motion and then the original one.
Thank you, Commissioner. I would just, yes, and I respect your analysis that you made with how some other parks have been plus up. As you did recognize, there are some projects, I have a park project, and there are other park projects, there are other public safety projects that have not received any funding through this. And what we have honored in the past is a level of discretion to each commissioner for projects within their district. And that would have been afforded you had this remained in District 3. But I think it's important for us to honor each other's interests when it comes to the projects that's within their district, and that's part of the reason that we're here today. However, as has been acknowledged by others, and I think by you and even the audience, that there are still other means of getting to the number that's desired. It may not be today, but if it's not today, that doesn't mean there's no other way. And I did speak with some members of the foundation and appreciate the conversation I had with Donna. I did learn there were some restricting terms in our contract, and I did speak with our county attorney who's working on this project. And there is room for discussion to see how it could potentially move forward in phases. I can't make any guarantees here today, but there was limiting language, and I didn't quite understand what was the holdup. And it may not just be money, but it's some terms that were in that contract that are limiting how funds can be expended through phases. So it would be my ask outside of this motion that we do all take the time to sit and discuss how we can work together. I'm hearing an interest in working together. I'm clearly hearing that today. It just may not be in this particular manner that's being requested through this substitute motion. And I will not go against the interest of any commissioner in moving funds throughout their district unless that commissioner is supportive. I can't do that because I know as a district commissioner, the amount of autonomy I had in projects, and I can't go, I can't go back on that. So with that, there is a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
This is on the substitute.
This is for the substitute motion that Commissioner Burl put forward. Okay, we'll call the question. Okay, the vote does not pass 4-1 with Commissioner Burl in support of that substitute motion and the other commissioners in opposition. With that, we still have the other motion pending on the floor, which is to approve these revenue above projections for the 2022 Splot's as was presented by our deputy county manager. There was no motion on that because the substitute motion was read. There was, okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, so there is a motion and a second. Thank you for refreshing. Is there any discussion on the original motion? Yes.
I just have a question. This, this RAP is.
I'm sorry. Let's just wait for a second because there's a lot of discussion, and I'm not listening to you, to be honest, so we'll wait. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
Is there anticipated to be an additional round of RAP funds later in the coming months?
Yes, sir. RAP 2 will happen after the last check is received, which is January of '27. We will then bring.
'28.
January '28. All right, thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Again, I'll just reiterate, there is support amongst the board to move this project forward. It is, there is not a meeting of the minds to move this project forward through this first revenue above projection that is on our agenda today, noting that there will likely be another one and that there are other ways for us to raise money to get to the end of this project. So with that, I'll call the question. The motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Burl in opposition. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, that now takes us to the DOT regular agenda.
You're all sitting there on the line-
We'll go ahead and we'll, we'll call a recess because we're just not-
We need all recess because you can't sit there with my brothers and sisters that die!
August 27th, 2025, and we are at our transportation tab.
Good evening, Chairwoman Commissioners, County Manager Drew Wrestler with DOT. We have seven items on the regular agenda for your consideration this evening. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a reimbursable contract for acquisition of right-of-way with the Georgia Department of Transportation for Dallas Highway at Lost Mountain Road, Mars Hill Road, Cobb County Project Number X-2305, authorize a corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents to include necessary quitclaim deeds to the Georgia Department of Transportation for right-of-way certification.
District 1. Excuse me, that will be Commissioner Gamble, yes.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $256,975 for 2026 resurfacing Americans with Disabilities Act ramp upgrades east, Project Number B-2927, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. District 2, Commissioner Allen.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a supplemental agreement Number 1 to Project Number B-2437, Task Order Number 1 to the 2022 Master Task Order Contract with Kinley Horn &amp; Associates Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $73,805 for engineering design of Johnson Ferry Road at Schallford Road, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you. So moved. And thank you, Drew. It's good to see this project coming to completion.
Of course.
Or beginning.
Continuation.
Yeah. So moved.
I'll have a second.
All right, is there any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Advanced Road Construction LLC in an amount not to exceed $283,825 for 2026 resurfacing ADA Ramp Upgrades West, Project Number B-2928, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Just wanna make sure I'm tracking correctly. That was 29 is what I had.
That was 29, it says 30.
And it was 30 now, okay, just making sure. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $389,740 for 2026 resurfacing ADA Ramp Upgrades Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, Project Number B-2930, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Allen.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $146,966 for Jamerson Road at Davis Elementary School, Project Number B-2806, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrell.
So moved. Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Drew. There was a tragic accident in front of Davis Elementary last month, and I wanna thank you, Drew, for you and your team to make, start making improvements already with the signage and then out of the school SPOLOST bucket, school improvement buckets, we were able to put additional improvements, so thank you. And the neighbors thank you, and the school thanks you, and our prayers go out to the family of the young man that was injured.
Absolutely. I'd also like to thank the police department for all of their efforts-
Yes, sorry.
During an immediate act.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any further discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And our final item this evening is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve change orders final to contracts for various completed projects in the 2011 SPOLOST Transportation Improvements Program Fund, 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvements Program Fund, 2022 SPOLOST Transportation Improvements Program Fund and Water System Fund, a total savings to the projects in the amount of $1,574,284.41. Authorize a corresponding budget and accounting transactions, and further authorize the chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Is there further discussion? Just some inquiry here because there's been a lot of discussion of phasing of projects. And I know the Chattahoochee River Trail pedestrian improvement project, we are funding one phase of it through SPOLOST, right?
Correct.
Okay, and with that project, we are utilizing funds from other sources, including other nonprofits.
Correct.
Okay. This is just to share, there is precedence for us phasing projects with other funding sources. We have done it, we can do it. I am confident we can do this if we just sit down and figure this out.
Talk through it, yeah.
Talk through it. Okay, thank you.
Of course.
All right, I'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that takes us to our second public comment.
Yes, Chairman. The first speaker is Bob Mannerd.
Yes.
The next one's Pete Pillar. Uh, the next one is Gustavo Vasquez. Yes, ma'am, you can come up and sign up. Uh, Jack Kimmich. And a shoot comes to sign up at the, no, over here.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Over here.
This way.
You're gonna sign up over there.
Jack Kimmich. Mr. Barth.
Ma'am, while he's approaching, yes, please sign the board there. Thank you.
Don Barth, good evening. I couldn't be more proud of some of y'all up there tonight. That's what we're here for. We are going to build a memorial, we all know it. It's gonna have to have a sign over there. It's gonna say "Under New Management." 10 years, and somebody can't move the mission forward? I heard them get on the news and make more excuses. It's this, it's that, it's COVID. Oh my God. That's, there's reasons when something doesn't go, and there's excuses. And y'all didn't take the excuses. You listened. And if we hadn't have been giving away the money, which I have mentioned before, we might not be in this fix right now. But what we've asked you to do, Sandy Springs went in there, Sandy Springs is a city, a municipality. They built a beautiful park. They used private funds on public land. We can do this, we are Cobb County. Last month, I heard you say we can do more with less. Listen to me, please, more with less. And we're gonna have to start this ball over again, but we need people that will move the ball forward. We don't need anybody that's got excuses, "Well, I can't." Well, most of those gentlemen and ladies, they've been to the war. They've climbed hills, they've been shot at, they've driven ships, flown airplanes, helicopters, whatever. They know how to overcome adversity. This is a setback. We will move forward as Cobb County, and we don't have to compromise to do that. So I'm very proud of those that stood for what's right. I'm very sorry that people showed up here under false narratives tonight and then left because it didn't go their way. They were told one thing, and they heard something else. A man said, "It's in black and white, it's in the books." You can read it for yourself. We have to get down to facts, and this was a fact. Thank you.
Denny Wilson.
Denny Wilson, District 4. You know, for the first time in me coming to these meetings, I'm very torn tonight because of the many phone calls that I received, and people wanting, wanted me to come in and stand in support of this memorial. I do support it because I come from a bloodline of service members, from my father, and there's not a generation in my family that has not served in the military. What I've heard over the last couple of days is people wanting to, wanting to exchange what's coming to my community for this memorial. And again, I support it, but I also support my community. I got calls saying Monique Shelffield was putting 5 million dollars in two parks in South Cobb. And that was supposed to anger me, but that's my community, and that's the community that I call home. Now, what that told me is you think that our children should not have a safe place to play. I have three small grandsons, 12, 8, and 7. And I wanna have a decent park to take them to in South Cobb, just like they want their memorial. I mean, I've looked at the facts. I've read the MOU, I've looked at the tax documents, I've looked at everything that I could to come to a decision to where I could agree with this. I've made phone calls to people to say, "Hey, you know, is, what do you think about this? What do you think about that?" But when you want to exchange the safety of the children in my community for a memorial that's gonna stand 146 feet tall, I can't go along with that. And I think that's where we may have a part in other ways because our children deserve to have the renovations in those parks, just as you think you deserve to have the memorial. And again, I stand with you. I mean, I think the memorial should be built, but you cannot continue to blame the board for not having fiscal responsibility, and then you want them to keep throwing money at private projects. I just don't feel that that's fair. Thank you.
The next speaker is Elizabeth Hanna.
Yes, please state your name when you're ready, and again, the clock is up there, and we'll let you know of your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for having me. My name is Elizabeth Hera. I have deep ties to this community. I was born and raised in Marietta, married my high school sweetheart. We welcomed all four of our children at Kennison Hospital. Three of our four children are in the armed forces. Our daughter's a soldier, our son's a marine, and our other son is a coastie. My father-in-law is a Vietnam vet, and our fa- his father was a World War II vet, and his grandfather was a World War I vet. Brief history of Cobb County, it was chartered in 1832, saw approximately 35 to 45 servicemen since then. Georgia Marietta National Cemetery is the resting place for 18,000 of these heroes. Currently, there are 5,700 servicemen in Cobb County, 50 to 60,000 active veterans, organization members. When I came here, I was hoping-
Interrupt. We do want to hear what you're saying. I just asked that you come a little bit closer to the microphone-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Project just a tad bit louder.
I get in trouble for being soft-spoken.
Some of us are soft-spoken, and it's okay, but we just wanna hear you.
Okay. When I came here, I thought I was gonna be speaking first or earlier, so I apologize. So some of what I'm gonna be saying is moot at this point because you've already voted. So, um, when our country was-
Comments still matter.
Okay.
Okay.
So, when our country was founded 250 years ago, it was on the shoulders of our military. And this year is the semi-quintcentennial of our military. Our Army, June 14th, 2025, and our Navy will celebrate June, October 13th, 2025, and then the Marines, November 10th, 2025. So this was very important for our veterans. So their sacrifice is important to all of us because we are here on their shoulders. So President Eisenhower said that every mission is important. We have to plan, prepare, execute, and evaluate. So this project seems to be questionable, the proposals that were made 10 years ago, and in that time, nothing has been done. Preparation of this project is seemingly absent, and that is disrespectful to all of our veterans living and deceased, no longer with us. Execution is obviously absent and should be scheduled immediately, and if explanation of why these funds that have been collected are specifically for the memorial and why they have not been used, and we need to start on this memorial. There needs to be an evaluation of what has been occurring and the entire commissioner board and those with the project managers for the foundation. I did not realize that there was more involved in this until I came here and heard, and I apologize for my ignorance on all of this, and I guess I need to dig deeper. Ignorance is a shameful thing for all of us. So I just think we need to break ground as quickly as possible. I was hoping that it would be sooner because it is the semi-quintcentennial, and we need to honor- oh, I apologize, I'm going over. Thank you so much for your time. I just think it's important to honor our vets.
The next speaker is John Garb. Garb.
Good evening, Commissioners. John Gargus. Uh, I, I'm lucky enough to work here in this great Cobb County. I wanted to take a different, take on something different. Uh, I wanted to congratulate the five of you up there, this, this county, the great people that work for this county. the great people that work for this county. Last week, y'all reported that the county extended its AAA credit rating, a 28-year streak. That, I mean, that is amazing. We've seen that happen across Republican majority, a Democratic majority. And we've shown it doesn't matter, you know, who's in control of the board, because it's not just the five that are up here tonight, but some great people in the back, some people that, you know, put in their 40 hours a day and then every week. Multiple county managers that have worked here. We could be here all night thanking you guys, but that's just something... It's something great to see. As y'all say, I don't think we see that in many governments. So y'all are at the upper echelon. And I know if we are a county that can accomplish that, we are a county that can come to a compromise about a Veterans Memorial. I reported on the Veterans Memorial probably as late as 2019. It was beautiful. I'd love to see it. I'd love to go visit it. I'm hoping, and I know we'll come to some compromise, we'll have something there to honor our men and women who served and still serve. I'm the product of several who have served in our Armed Forces. I'm the grandson of Barney and Ethely, who served in World War II. My grandfather, whom I'm named after, served in the Korean War. Sadly, they're not with me anymore. But I'm lucky enough to have several uncles that served in the Navy that are still around. And I think, you know, if we work together as a community, and I know beyond the folks that work here for the county, we can and do, and often do, work as a great community. We can get something done. So I hope people who left here may be a little bit disappointed tonight. We'll come back, and we'll work together, and we'll find a solution. Thank you.
David Holmes?
Chairman Cupid. Oh, I'm sorry, name first. David Holmes, United States Marine Corps, West Cobb resident. 24 years of service to this country, active in reserve. I stand before you, and I'm saddened that all the veterans left disappointed. I sent an email to each one of you, I heard back from some. I've read the newspapers. I heard that many veterans from two of our Commissioners have said they don't want this memorial. Why were the seats filled tonight? I just couldn't believe that. Chairman Allen, I appreciate your effort to compromise. Where I come from, Jersey, we have a sit-down. We compromise. I hope you all can reach that. I'm here on behalf of my father. Served and fought in World War II, Purple Heart, Two Bronze Stars. Unfortunately, his brother didn't make it back. He gave his life for this country. He's buried in France, mortally wounded the day before his 22nd birthday. Why do I say that to you? I say that to you because veterans past, present, and future. That's what memorials are for. I was never gonna join the Marine Corps, the military, hippie kid like me. I did it because I went to many of our memorials at our Capitol. I was never gonna be a Marine or military. 24 years later, I retired out of the Marine Corps as a Master Sergeant. You had many ranks here tonight, two generals, oh my God. They implore you to look deeper. If you truly support veterans, how can you not support this memorial? Last year, I went through the Cobb 101 class. Sorry. The doctor here, she was awesome. Great class. I saw the money that this county brings in, 1.2 million? I've seen discretionary funds. Y'all get a million dollars every year. I've been a resident 31 years. 31 years. I've seen what this county has done. Republicans, Democrats. We had Mike Boyce's wife here tonight. What a patriot he was, what a leader he was, sitting in your chair, Commissioner Cupid. I ask you, and I've changed what I was thinking. This is from the heart. There's no notes here. Reevaluate this. Please don't blame these folks that have worked so hard. I followed Donna Rowe for 31 years, and I lived here. That woman is a patriot, and I think her ethics are beyond reproach. And many of these people, I know them. They're not here anymore, again, they're very disappointed. Revisit this. Meet with these folks. Find the money. I know you can. Our finance guy was here a little bit ago. He'll help you. The money's there, 1.2 billion-dollar budget. And I know there's rules and laws and everything. You can do it. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
JT Jackson?
Hey there, JT Jackson, District Two. Wanted to just have a moment of gratitude up here. Summer winds down in Cobb County. I just wanted to reflect on some of the amazing moments that I've gotten to have here at my home. The All-Star Game, MLB All-Star Game, absolutely incredible. Getting to meet with some people that I looked up to a lot, you know, as a child, even now, and for that to be walking distance from the place I call home, just, you know... Growing up, you think you gotta move somewhere like Chicago or the Bronx to experience something like that, and being able to do that at home is incredible. The Palisades upgrades, those were touched on a little earlier. But being able to play River Guide with my friends this summer, and the takeout spot being just beautiful, a beautiful spot to, you know, have fun this summer in the Chattahoochee. Absolutely incredible. The park behind Jenny's that's been put out. It's a hidden gem for the county. Great bike racks, awesome place to eat some ice cream. And then the Silver Comet Connector. I'm a cyclist, and seeing the bike infrastructure of the county just grow, you know, over my lifetime. I remember being a little kid, my dad, he would take us to the Silver Comet, you know, out in Ostelle. And just seeing, you know, the addition of stuff, the Mountain to River Trail. And now we have a connection to the Belt Line in Atlanta via the Silver Comet. It's just amazing stuff to see. And speaking of bikes, I wanted to also shout out Officer Abloshee from Cobb PD, I believe, for taking the time to lead a youth mountain bike team and do trail maintenance at Alatuna Creek, one of my favorite mountain bike parks here in Cobb. And also, leading the Trail Marker Initiative on Noonday Creek Trail up in Kennesaw. And also shout out to the new signage on Noonday Creek Trail in Kennesaw. That's really cool stuff to see. Love seeing the investment and, you know, folks wanting to get out and enjoy this amazing place that we get to call home. So thank you all for the work that you do in bringing some of these things to life. And we, the people, really enjoy it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Hannah Johnston?
Hello. Sorry about the confusion with the clipboard, by the way. But thank you for letting me speak. My name is Hannah Johnston, and I live in Marietta, Georgia. I was born here. My family has lived in Cobb County since 1842, so I'm what they called Old Marietta. And I'm here tonight not to talk about the Veterans Memorial, which I do support, but a veteran that can't speak for himself. I don't know if anyone on the board or in the room knows who Dobbin's Air Reserve Base is named after. Does anybody know? No. Charles Dobbin's was born in 1917 in Marietta, Georgia. He graduated from Marietta High School in 1933. He went on to join the US Army Air Corps and flew C-47s. He had 1,000 hours of flight time. He was shot down off the coast of Sicily on July 11th, 1943, in Operation Husky, which is also known as the Invasion of Sicily. That happened before D-Day, by the way. I have read his mother's letters that she wrote to the Department of the Army. I have seen his list of belongings that were sent home in his footlocker. He has been missing for 82 years. He was never recovered. Neither were the six other people on his plane or his aircraft. I have taken it upon myself to privately fundraise for a billboard that is going to go up on Monday, September 1st, along I-75 northbound, near the exit for Dobbin's Air Reserve Base and Delk Road. I'm asking for people to please talk about Charles, for there to be discussion on how we can find him. I am not related to him. Charles' mother died in the mid-'70s. He had one brother who has passed away. The only family I have found of Charles are all distant cousins. So when I contact the DPAA, which is the government agency to find lost and missing soldiers, they tell me they can't talk to me because I'm not his family. This is deeply upsetting to me, that after 82 years, this base that we all love in Cobb County, when we think of Dobbin's Air Reserve Base, we don't just think of jobs, we think of military prestige. We think of something that we're proud of. Cobb County is very patriotic. But this place that we all love to talk about and go to, the person it's named after is still missing. I would really like to see Charles brought home. I would like to see his plane found. There are other families besides Charles's that would receive closure by finding his plane. I have written to 15 different government agencies asking for help. I have written the White House, I have written the governor, I have written James Cameron, who directed Titanic. I've directed or emailed so many people that are involved in search and recovery for down airplanes. So I just wanted this on the record. I know it's not about the memorial or anything else we're talking tonight, but I do want Charles to be remembered. And I do look forward to the day when I go to the Veterans Memorial here in Cobb County and I see his name. Thank you.
Chair, this is the last speaker of the second portion.
Thank you, Bill. That now takes us to our appointment tab. And all three of our appointments are announcements. So I will defer to Commissioner Allen for the first two.
To announce the appointment of Thomas W. Tribble to the Neighborhood Safety Commission, and to announce the reappointment of Sharman Southall to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I also announce the appointment of Fadi Ali to the 1% Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee. That name needs to be shortened. Yes, SLOST Oversight Committee. With that, that concludes our appointment tab. And that now takes us to the Commissioner's public address. And once the slides are on the screen, Commissioner Garble, you can begin.
Savor the best of Cobb County during Cobb Foodie Week, September 6th through 13th. Diners can use the Cobb Foodie Week Meals Deal Pass to unlock digital coupons at participating restaurants. Enjoy discounts, giveaways, and specials throughout the week. You can learn more by scanning the QR code below. Dog Days at the Garden. Smith Gilbert Gardens in Kennesaw will host Dog Days at the Gardens every Tuesday and Saturday from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m., starting September 6th. Admission is $3 per dog per visit, or $20 for an annual dog membership, which includes a special gift. You can scan the QR code for details below. National Dog Day is celebrated today. Honors dogs as companions and service animals while promoting adoption and support for shelters. Happy Labor Day. This holiday weekend, we celebrate the hard work, dedication, and contributions of workers in our community. We hope you enjoy a safe and restful holiday with your family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. That now takes us to Commissioner Allen.
I have no slides. Just wanted to wish everyone a safe and happy Labor Day.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll go to Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. Safety improvements on Jamerson Road following the recent accident near the intersection of Jamerson Road and Turtle Rock Drive at Davis Elementary School. A student was struck, and a speed sensor was installed. Area signage was updated. And now, and a young man faces a long road to recovery. And our heartfelt prayers remain with him and his family for healing and strength. With the Board's approval of Agenda Item Number 31 tonight, work on additional safety improvements will begin in the very near future. Also in District Three, DOT Project B2315, safety and operational project that proposes to repurpose portions of the two-way left-turn lane along Holly Springs Road with dedicated left-turn lanes and small medians. Construction of this will occur from September through December of 2025. For more information, go to cobbcounty.gov/transportation/news. And county offices will be closed on Monday, September 1st in observation of Labor Day, and enjoy the holiday.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll now go to Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Chair. Today marks an important day in District Four in Cobb County as we officially open the long-awaited, long-anticipated Tunnel to Towers Veterans Village. Today's ribbon-cutting was more than the opening of a new facility. It is the opening of new opportunities, renewed hope, and a stronger future for our veterans. The Tunnel to Towers Foundation's delivered on a promise to the veterans and first responders in our community, and has once again demonstrated what it means to stand with those who have sacrificed so much for us. The new location offer 98 apartments, a library, fitness center, support services, and so much more. It will be a place of dignity, support, and community, and its impact will be felt for generations to come. Thanks to my fellow Commissioners for supporting the zoning application some years ago, and to everyone that made this vision a reality. Brad, if we advance to the next slide, you'll see some photos from the inside. The Tunnel to Towers Veterans Village is located at 65 South Services Road in Mabelton, and they are currently accepting applications. And I was joined today by the Chair and Commissioner Burl, and it is simply an amazing property. It's just simply beautiful. And I'll draw your attention to the image of the flag to the left, what you may be able to make out of those small photographs of people that the foundation has helped over the years. And I think it totals somewhere like over 300,000 people. It is simply a beautiful, beautiful property, and it's just a few feet from Six Flags Park. So they're excited to have future employees that will come out of this village. And all rooms are equipped with furniture. As you can see, a picture of the bedroom there, and the bathroom to the right, and a kitchenette, which I don't think is pictured here, but it's just simply a beautiful property. District Four will be home to Cobb County's new 911 Emergency Communication Center, and I invite you to join me, our Directors of Public Safety E911 and Facilities Management, for a community meeting. This meeting will provide an important opportunity for you to learn about the new Emergency Communication Center, and how this upgrade will enhance emergency response capabilities. The meeting will be Monday, September 8th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Ron Anderson Community Center located at 3820 Macedonia Road in Powder Springs. And finally, Happy Labor Day. Cobb County Government Offices will be closed Monday, September 1st in observance of Labor Day. This holiday is a chance to pause and celebrate the contributions of hard-working men and women across our community. I wish you all a safe, restful, and joyful Labor Day weekend.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, all of you, for tuning in today. Today has been a day of patriotism and civic good, again, with the opening of the Veterans Village from Tunnel to Towers, celebrating the anniversary of women voting here in this country, and knowing that this Board is committed to moving the Veterans Memorial project. If there was any doubt with respect to that, I hope that that has been laid to rest as we work together to see how that project can move forward. But I do want to finish where one of our speakers left off, in talking about some of our amazing accomplishments. I think sometimes we get wrapped up in the things that are challenging for us, that we don't take the time to recognize the good. So yes, very recently, we were recognized with our 28th year in a row of AAA bond rating, and that is thanks to the decisions of our leaders here in the county, inclusive of our Board, our county manager, our finance team, and our managers, our employees who also contribute to that, as well as our citizens and their support. We had a fantastic All-Star Game not too long ago, and we're still reaping the benefit and excitement from that. Recently, we connected the comment, so it now connects to the Atlanta Belt Line, and we ushered in dozens of bikers from Atlanta to Cobb and vice versa. And that's making this region more accessible. We also kicked off Cobb 101, which is creating a partnership with our citizens to get a peek behind the curtain and learn about how we're... behind the curtain and learn about how we're conducting business here, so we can strengthen partnership with those that give us our ability to serve. Also today, we cut the ribbon on a partnership between the Medical College of Georgia and Willstark Kinnostone, so that we can create better access for residents to work here in Cobb County, and hopefully after they finish their residency, to call Cobb County home. And that is just one out of many things. Also, the International Festival we had this past weekend, and that was put on with the support of many volunteers, our staff, and we got a chance to see the great diversity of this county that makes our county great. Commissioners, we do a lot of good every day. We have the ability to celebrate it, and it does give us that track record of knowing that we can do the hard things. And I believe the hard things that we discussed here tonight, that we will find a path forward, and I look forward to working with each one of you to get to the end and to see that memorial project actualized here in our county. With that, again, thank you for tuning in. I hope each of you have a wonderful evening. We are now adjourned.